All right. Good evening. It is 7:00 PM. You are attending the Planning Board meeting for the City of Bangor. This is January 21st, 2025. My name is Reese Perkins. I'm chairman of the board. Other board members in attendance this evening to my left, vice chair Jonathan Boucher, Ted Brush, like Lesnet, Ken Hume. I was gonna say Janet Jonas, but Janet Jonas is on Zoom with us. And then Tricia Hayes is down at the end. And alternate member Jennifer King is absent this evening. Board members are volunteers from the Bangor community. We thank them for their service. City staff members in attendance this evening include planning officer Anya Colette, assistant solicitor Grace Innes, city engineer Jefferson Davis, planning analyst Brian Skinnell, and stormwater technician Rich May. Thank you guys for helping set us up and be in here for the training and so forth. So I'll start with old business this evening. Meeting minutes from the January 7th meeting written in your packet. Do I have any modifications or comments that anyone wants to bring up? Move to approve. I have a motion to approve from member Hume. Do I have a second on that? Member Basnet was first. Before we get to a roll call vote, I would like to make one comment on the minutes that I think we should make a change to. And under the election of officers, it says we elected Jonathan and Janet. What we did is we nominated Jonathan and Janet and then elected Jonathan. So as long as that's noted, I would appreciate that. I think that was right on the first page. And so keep the motion with the change.
Motion is amended.
As amended. Thank you. And still a second, member Basnet. It's a roll call vote. Member Basnet?
Yes.
Member Boucher?
Yes.
Member Hayes?
Yes.
Member Hume?
Yes.
Member Jonas?
Yes.
Thank you. And the chair votes yes. So unanimous approval with the amendment of the meeting minutes from January 7th. The next item of old business is adoption of findings and decisions. There were two projects that we had last week, last meeting. One was 1171 Broadway, as you recall, that's the Dollar General store. And then 36 Pleasant Street, which was the Bangor Savings Project. Any discussion on those projects? And if none, I would take a motion on approving the adoption of findings and decisions. Member Hume? Thank you. And a second on that? Member Boucher, thank you. And a roll call vote? Member Basnet?
Yes.
Member Boucher?
Yes.
Member Hayes?
Yes.
Member Hume?
Yes.
Member Jonas?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Unanimous approval of the adoption of findings and decisions for 1171 Broadway and 36 Pleasant Street. Thank you all for that. So we'll now move to the chair introduction for the new business this evening. The planning board has two main roles. First, we review amendments to the Land Development Code, which typically include either changes to zoning districts or changes to the text within the code. We do not have any of those projects, however, this evening. So I'm not going to talk anymore about that. Second, the board serves as a regulatory authority for the land development permits, commonly known as site plan review. We do have one of those on the agenda this evening. Site plans are reviewed to ensure compliance with city code as to parking, driveways, stormwater management, lighting, landscaping, et cetera, as applicable. We also ensure the plan meets the dimensional requirements for the project's zoning district. State statute outlines the requirements for subdivision review, and the city has additional standards as to roadway and utility specifications. The board ultimately endorses a plan that will go to the registry of deeds if the plan is approved. There is, as I said, one item on the agenda, that is land development permit. I would like to just make some notes regarding the order of the meeting and public participation. If anyone is interested in finding more information on the city's codes and standards and/or the comprehensive plan, that can be found on the city's website. When an applicant is asked to present their project or proposal, they or their representative should come forward to the podium up front and provide a brief introduction to the application. Once the presentation has been made, the applicant should stay at the podium while we take questions from board members and comments from staff. The applicant then may be seated. We will next open the floor to public comments. If there are any comments from the public, we ask that the person come to the podium as well, introduce themselves, and state if they are Bangor resident or in a butter to the property, and indicate if they are for or against the project. Either way, it would be helpful if you present your thoughts based upon city codes and standards and/or the comprehensive plan, as those are the primary documents used by the board to make our decision. If you are on Zoom, please use the raised hand function to let us know you would like to speak, and we can bring you into the meeting. All comments and discussions should remain respectful and considerate of others. Once public comments are completed, we will then close that item to public comments. The board will then deliberate on the proposal using the standards as applicable and act on the proposal. Standards will be read and voted on separately as required. Once standards are reviewed, a decision will be read and voted on. Once the project you are interested in has been reviewed, feel free to leave the meeting. You don't have to stay, but be respectfully quiet so as not to disturb other agenda items. So that's the introduction to the new business. Now with the new business, we have a land development permit application this evening. It is for the creation of a flag lot for a single-family residence at property located at 296 Kittredge Road. This is map lot R60-005 in the rural residents and agricultural district. The applicant is Jacob Valley. The owner is Kyle Johnson. Staff has indicated completeness of this application and that it is ready for board review. Fees are documented and paid. The applicant's standing is confirmed. Does the board have any questions or concerns about the completeness of the application? Or are there any conflicts of interest concerns that we have this evening? Board members seeing none, I would take a motion on the acceptability of the application's completeness. And you can use the notes under procedural background that's in your packet if you'd like to do that. Member Boucher?
I move the application was deemed complete on January 21st, 2025. The applicant paid all applicable fees, see exhibit three. And the proposed project is the creation of a flag lot.
Thank you. Do I have a second on this? Member Basnet, thank you. Roll call vote, member Basnet?
Yes.
Member Boucher?
Yes.
Member Brush?
Yes.
Member Hayes?
Yes.
Member Hume?
Yes.
Yes, sorry.
That's all right. You'll get used to it. And the chair votes yes. So that's unanimous approval of the application's completeness. So at this point, the applicant is Jacob Valley. Do we have the applicant? Oh, this is you.
Mr. Chair.
Please come on up and just a brief introduction. I mean, we've got information in the packet on the project, but if you'd just give us a little bit of information, and then we'll hit you with questions if we need to.
So as you know, my name is Jacob Valley. The property that we're talking about, it's 296 Kittredge Road. We submitted the application to build a single-family house. As long as we're able to get a flag lot there, we met all the conditions that we were brought to our attention as far as, you know, requirements for driveway setbacks from flooding property, as well as, you know, subject design and so on and so forth. So yeah, grew up here, wife and kids, tried to build a house. And the property may say that it is intrigued of, we want it to remain intrigued of. So nothing's really going to be changing besides the single-family, no commercial development, nothing like that, no multi-units, and not really cutting down on any trades besides that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Hang on up here for a bit, if you would. Staff comments on this one? No? Nothing? Board member questions for the applicants? Member Brush?
Yeah, what is the width of the access strip?
I believe it's 90 feet.
90 feet. And what's the statute requirement, you know?
It's 50.
50. 60.
50.
50. Thank you.
It was 93, wasn't it?
It was 80 to 90.
Was it 83.72 or something?
Yeah. You got it on there? It's well more than 50.
Yep.
Any other questions? Member Jonas, none. Okay. So you can sit?
Sure.
And we will open this up for public comments. Any public comments, ma'am?
No.
Okay. Seeing nobody else in the room, seeing nobody else on Zoom. I am going to close the public comments, portion of them. And before going to motions on standards, do any board members have concerns or issues they would like to bring up before we get to the standards to vote on? No? Then let's move right to the standards. Part one, which requires the project to meet the requirements of 165-68B for flag lots. Got a motion on item one. Member Basnet?
Mr. Chair, I move the board finds that based on exhibits two and 11, the project meets the requirements of Land Development Code, Section 165-68B1 and Section 165-68B6 regarding minimum street frontage and minimum access strip width.
Thank you. Do I have a second on this one? Member Brush, thank you. Roll call vote. Member Basnet?
Yes.
Member Boucher?
Yes.
Member Brush?
Yes.
Member Hayes?
Yes.
Member Hume?
Yes.
Member Jonas?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Moving on to item two of part one. Can I have a motion on item two? Member Brush?
Mr. Chair, I move the board finds that based on exhibits two and 11, the project meets the requirements of Land Development Code, Section 165-68B3 and Section 165-68B4 regarding the access strip not being used in the computation of the minimum area and dimensional requirements of the rear lot. And regarding the rear lot, meeting the requirements of the district within which it lies.
Thank you. Do I have a second on this one? Member Hume, thank you. And roll call vote, member Basnet?
Yes.
Member Boucher?
Yes.
Member Brush?
Yes.
Member Hayes?
Yes.
Member Hume?
Yes.
Member Jonas?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Unanimous approval of item two. Can I have a motion on item three of part one? Member Boucher?
Mr. Chair, I move the board finds that based on exhibits two and 11, the project meets the requirements of the Land Development Code, Section 165-68B7 regarding the requirements for lots in the rural residents and agricultural district with access strips exceeding 200 feet in length.
Thank you. Do I have a second on this one? Member Basnet, thank you. Roll call vote. Member Basnet?
Yes.
Member Boucher?
Yes.
Member Brush?
Yes.
Member Hayes?
Yes.
Member Hume?
Yes.
Member Jonas?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So unanimous approval of item three. Could I have a motion on item four of part one? Member Hayes?
I move the board finds that based on exhibits two and 11, the project meets the requirements of Land Development Code, Section 165-68B5 regarding the requirement that only one tier of rear lots shall be permitted behind the tier of lots fronting on the street.
Thank you. Do I have a second on this one? Member Brush, thank you. Roll call vote, member Basnet?
Yes.
Member Boucher?
Yes.
Member Brush?
Yes.
Member Hayes?
Yes.
Member Hume?
Yes.
Member Jonas?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Unanimous approval on item four of part one. Can I have a motion on item five of part one? Member Brush first there.
Mr. Chair, I move the board finds that based on exhibit two, the project meets the requirements of the Land Development Code, Section 165-68B9 regarding application plans being stamped by a professional land surveyor.
Thank you. Member Hume, you had your hand up. Do you second this? Yep, thank you. So motion and a second. Roll call vote, member Basnet?
Yes.
Member Boucher?
Yes.
Member Brush?
Yes.
Member Hayes?
Yes.
Member Hume?
Yes.
Member Jonas?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Unanimous approval of all items under part one. So moving on to part two, which requires the project to meet Section 165-126, which is minor subdivision requirements. Can I have a motion on item one of part two? Member Boucher?
Mr. Board, ah, Mr. Board. Mr. Chair, I move the board finds that based on exhibit two, eight, and 11, the project meets the requirements of Land Development Code, Section 165-126F1 regarding compliance with the state of Maine guidelines for subdivision approval contained in 30-AMR SA, section 4404.
Thank you. Do I have a second on this one? Member Basnet, thank you. Roll call vote, member Basnet?
Yes.
Member Boucher?
Yes.
Member Brush?
Yes.
Member Hayes?
Yes.
Member Hume?
Yes.
Member Jonas?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Unanimous approval of item one, part two. Can I have a motion of item two, part two? Member Brush?
Mr. Chair, I move the board finds that based on exhibit two and 11, the project meets the requirements of Land Development Code, Section 165-126F2 regarding compliance with existing zoning regulations regarding lot dimensions and areas.
Thank you. Do I have a second on this one? Member Hume, thank you. Roll call vote. Member Basnet?
Yes.
Member Boucher?
Yes.
Member Brush?
Yes.
Member Hayes?
Yes.
Member Hume?
Yes.
Member Jonas?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Unanimous approval of item two, part two. Can I have a motion on item three, part two? Member Basnet?
Mr. Chair, I move the board finds that based on exhibit two, the project meets the requirements of Land Development Code, Section 165-126F3 through 4 regarding the requirement for at least one side of a lot to a butt, a street, and regarding the angle of side lot lines.
Thank you. Do I have a second on this one? Member Hayes, thank you. Roll call vote, member Basnet?
Yes.
Member Boucher?
Yes.
Member Brush?
Yes.
Member Hayes?
Yes.
Member Hume?
Yes.
Member Jonas?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Unanimous on item three. Could I have a motion on item four of part two? Member Hayes?
I move the board finds that based on exhibit two and 12, the project meets the requirements of Land Development Code, Section 165-126F6 regarding the plat containing all information required in Section 165-126D1 through 8.
Thank you. Do I have a second on this one? Member Hume, thank you. Roll call vote, member Basnet?
Yes.
Member Boucher?
Yes.
Member Brush?
Yes.
Member Hayes?
Yes.
Member Hume?
Yes.
Member Jonas?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So that's unanimous approval of all four items under part two. Part three is a requirement that the project meets Section 165-114, which is the land development approval standards. There's just one item on this part three. Can I have a motion on this one? Member Hume?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I find that the board finds that based on the findings made in parts one and part two of Section 4 of the document, as well as exhibits two, eight, 11, and 12, the project satisfies the requirements of Land Development Code, 165-114A regarding subdivisions.
Thank you. Do I have a second on this one? Member Basnet, thank you. And a roll call vote, member Basnet?
Yes.
Member Boucher?
Yes.
Member Brush?
Yes.
Member Hayes?
Yes.
Member Hume?
Yes.
Member Jonas?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So that's unanimous approval of all of the standards, which brings us to the decision on the project. Can I have a motion on the decision? Member Brush?
Mr. Chair, I move the board finds that the project meets the requirements for land development, a land development permit for a flag lot, and therefore grants the land development permit for the proposed project.
Thank you. Do I have a second on this one? Member Hayes, thank you. Roll call vote, member Basnet?
Yes.
Member Boucher?
Yes.
Member Brush?
Yes.
Member Hayes?
Yes.
Member Hume?
Yes.
Member Jonas?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So that's unanimous on all items, including the decision. Your project is approved. Recommend reaching out to the code enforcement office next. All right. So with that taken care of, for other business this evening, we start with the annual training, which begins with assistant solicitor Innes and legal stuff.
Yes. I think most of you were here last year when I did this. I don't think that you were here when I did this.
I think you're up.
So I'll just do kind of a broad overview. We don't have to do the whole thing. So I'll just start with your decision-making process. So you make decisions based on due process per Section 14 of your bylaws. Due process is the requirement that legal matters be resolved according to established rules and principles, and that individuals be treated fairly. And the commitment to due process requires that decisions by the board be unbiased, fair, and impartial. The Freedom of Access Act, which I'm about to get into, does aid in this. So the Freedom of Access Act is a state statute that was passed by the Maine Legislature. And its purpose is that actions of public bodies be taken openly and that records of its actions be open to public inspection. The idea of FOA is that public proceedings exist to aid in the conduct of people's business. So there are two prongs to FOA, and that's public proceedings and public records. So I'll start with public records. This is basically, almost anything can be accessed by anyone. So anyone can send me a FOA request and ask for any information. And that includes information that goes to you guys' emails. So we really suggest that you set up a separate email for your planning board stuff so that it doesn't get crossed over with your personal effects. So if you, let's say, make a decision and somebody FOAs the emails that were sent to the planning board, then we might request that you send us your emails. We usually would be able to access those anyways because we send you probably more emails than you send them yourselves. So the second prong is public proceedings. Public proceedings is something like this. So these are advertised and open to the public, so anyone can come. And when you have a public hearing, like you just did, anyone can speak at that public hearing. And I'm just going to move right on to the code of ethics. So conflicts of interest. We had a couple of them come up this last year. Usually what will happen is somebody will announce that they might have a conflict, and then we'll kind of dig down into the facts of what that conflict might be. And then you guys will vote on whether or not there is a conflict. If you decide that there is a conflict, then that person should leave the room for the extent of that application just to make sure that there's no question that they had no influence over that decision. Moving on to gifts, that one's pretty easy. You can't accept a gift in exchange for your decision. And then confidential information. This one's a little tricky because, like I just went over with FOA, most things are public. Some things are confidential, but we will mark them as confidential. I don't think anything coming in front of this board would be confidential, but sometimes like trade secrets or something like that. So the Board of Assessment Review sometimes has trade secrets that go in front of it, and that remains confidential. And then finally, social media. This one I kind of drilled down into last year. Just making sure that you are just acting as an individual and not representing the board in any social media posts. So like on my social media pages, I just wrote, you know, the views I express on the site are my own because I don't want anyone thinking that I'm expressing the City of Bangor's opinions. So something like that could go in your bio on your social media. But did any of you have any questions? I know that was fast, but it was just kind of a review for most of you.
Can I just bring up, you know, I wouldn't be surprised because I know the newspaper has contacted me before.
Yeah.
So don't be surprised. Ken's probably had that happen. The rules are the same, right?
Yes. Yeah, they are. If you get contacted by the newspaper, feel free to reach out to any of us, and we'll connect you with who handles that kind of stuff. But yeah, if you're going to give an opinion, just clarify that it's your own opinion.
Yeah.
Unless it's coming from the city itself. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So stormwater is next. Rich May is coming up.
Hello, planning board members. I think you have all seen this before. Cam, like you said, you took your off. I know you've seen this before. Is this already going by the way you said this? So I'm going to kind of run through this as quick as I can. I'm going to keep you guys familiar with the permit. It's a requirement of the permit. Permanent issued by Maine DEP under the authority of the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. Gets renewed every five years. In theory, the last permit went nine years. We're in year three of the permit cycle now. So we'll get a new permit again in 2027 if everything goes to plan. Just a reminder about sort of the infrastructure we have in town here. You know, tonight, I'm talking about stormwater. But we have three kind of conveyances in town. We have a storm sewer that just conveys rainwater, usually deposits it in the closest stream or river, whatever the case is. We have sanitary sewer, takes interior plumbing, takes that to the treatment plant. And then we have combined sewers, and those are, you know, where you have both rainwater and interior plumbing going to the same pipe that then goes to the treatment plant. Those last two sewers are permitted separately. We're just talking about strictly storm sewers here. But we do have all three in town.
What's the percentage?
That's a good question. Generally, the east side is much more separated than the west side. Percentage-wise, I don't know, maybe 40% combined.
We've made a lot of efforts to go after that.
Yeah, and those efforts continue. But as you know, it's quite expensive.
So it's 60/40 still, probably?
That's off the top of my head.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. We won't hold you to that.
Yeah. There's still significant combined, but we're always working on that and taking opportunities when we can.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Rich. When did that change?
What's that?
I mean, the reason why there's some combined is because for a while, they were all combined.
Correct. Yeah. So Clean Water Act in 1960s.
Okay.
That's when it... Really, Bangor did a lot of separation starting in the late 80s through early 2000s, probably, as was the bulk of that separation happened. Since then, we've sort of been focusing more on storage of that combined sewage. And so that still gets treated at the treatment plant just over a longer period of time. So anyways, back to the structure of the permit. I know this is way more interesting. It sort of has six basic sections, which we call MCMs, Minimum Control Measures. And we'll go through all those in a little bit more detail as we go. So MCMs one and two, public education outreach, involvement, and participation. We do a lot of this through a collaborative effort in the Bangor Area Stormwater Group. It just makes more sense for the communities around here that are also permitted to get together and have one voice rather than everybody trying to do it individually. So you can see here, we've got a storm drain stencil pictured here with the fish and the message. People don't still understand that, you know, most of the time, a storm drain goes right to the local waterway. We've really tried to get that message out. The Maine Discovery Museum, the Children's Museum on Main Street, they have a newer exhibit that includes focusing on the Penobscot River. And we have a piece in there. And we also usually present at the Maine Science Festival in the spring. This is a picture of the graphic that's in the Maine Discovery Museum. It's a self-dead hens from Orono in photo there. You can see this is sort of the water feature within that exhibit. So great place to educate the next generation about water and stormwater. MCM three is illicit discharge detection and elimination. This is, you know, kind of the, I don't want to say the fun part of the permit, but the more satisfying pieces of work that we get to do. You know, nobody wants to have dirty water in the place where they live. So this is kind of finding those sources of contamination that might exist. You know, where, you know, your interior plumbing might be hooked into the storm sewer and go into the river, or spills, that kind of thing, or illegal dumping. All of those things we're trying to stop. You know, we do systematic investigations as well, where we test out falls. In this case, we were doing construction on the storm drain, and there were indications that there was sewage in that flow.
Sure.
We kind of worked our way out from there and found that connection. Construction site runoff control, this deals with sites in the city that disturb more than an acre of land, and that they have to be using appropriate erosion and sedimentation controls. You know, that goes from, you know, when you first break down and then a break around and then to, you know, the final product of, okay, construction is done, the soils are stabilized, usually with vegetation. And so it's sort of that whole process. You have to do three inspections of those sites, just to make sure they're doing those practices. MCM five.
Did you say this was pre-inspection?
Three inspections, yes.
Three inspections?
Yeah, there used to be two on some sites and three on others, and now it's three on all with this new permit. MCM five is post-construction stormwater management controls. So, you know, when an application comes in, and they're creating an acre of impervious area, they're going to have to build a stormwater structure of some kind, usually a soil filter or something like that is most common these days. So not only do they have to build it, they have to maintain that in perpetuity to keep in compliance with their permit, and our role is to make sure that they're doing that. So they have to report to us annually that those structures are in use.
We typically see the checklist, right, in our packet? That's what typically?
Yeah, yeah, that inspection and maintenance, but that is a requirement that they submit to act, and that's, you know, all stemming from the permit here.
And that's any size of construction, not just a?
It's if you disturb an acre, you have to have at least an erosion and sedimentation control plan. If you have an acre of impervious or half an acre in an impaired water shed, then you have to do stormwater treatment.
Is there anything done to monitor the quality of the stormwater?
We do the systematic testing, as I mentioned earlier. That can be fairly basic, though. I mean, so there's still pollutants, you know, from everybody that's walked around and, you know, dropping their cigarettes in their litter and, you know, that kind of stuff.
Does that ever raise any action, control?
In the more, you know, cases where it's not sort of an incidental type of pollution, where it's either intentional or negligent, that kind of thing, that would get some more attention. With the systematic testing, if we were to, say, go to an outfall and find that there's high E coli, that would indicate sewage, or if there is optical brighteners, that would indicate, you know, laundry being washed in that water. So those are the sort of things we're looking for, and we'll chase those back in those systematic investigations or chance ones, like I mentioned earlier.
Petroleum.
Petroleum, yeah, and that one, you know, that one's generally related to spills more so than chronic sort of pollution. So yeah, any of those things, we'd certainly follow up on. So one thing that's been coming and has been challenged legally a few times is low-impact development ordinance. You know, per the original schedule, we would have been enacting that over the last year. It would have been July first, twenty twenty-four, but with challenges to that from interest groups, we're still kind of working through it, and we don't really know when that is going to happen yet. But when we do, we'll be sure to let you know. But that's going to involve sites that not necessarily create an acre of impervious, but disturb an acre of land, and they'll have to be using sort of best management practices to minimize the impact that the development has. So things like preserving natural drainage ways, reducing impervious cover, a lot of the things that coincide with what we think of when we think of, you know, higher-quality streams and stormwater, that kind of thing. So that's coming, but we're not there yet.
And the way we see that, I feel, is the, when we see an application, the application form has a box on it, LID techniques required. And that's checked or not checked?
Well, it's actually recommended because currently, we can't, we don't require it.
Okay.
And they just say whether they did it or not.
Whether they did it or not, okay. So you see that, if you see that on the, on the application, that's what that is, the LID?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And yeah, like I said, it's, you know, supposed to be required, and, you know, with the legal challenges, it's been a battle between DUP and interest groups, and of course, the permittees like ourselves. So we're not sure exactly what that's going to look like still, but it will be an ordinance change at some point, I believe. And then that will be approved by yourselves as a, you know, required one sixty-five, so.
Yep.
Yeah. And then the final, MCM is pollution prevention, good housekeeping for municipal operations. We want to be as good as everybody else, if not better, so this is kind of just making sure that we're doing all the right things, doing trainings like this, not only for planning board and city council, but for groups like Public Works. You know, it'd be nice to get in public safety, they have a lot of other important things to do, but they see so much. It'd be nice if they could do a little bit more and could report back to us when they see things that don't look right. Urban impaired streams is now a piece of this permit as well. It kind of got tacked on the end. You probably know, we have six of those in town. You can see the map here. We've got Injaduaw Stream, that's had some use coverage, and we're actually working on a new watershed management plan that's due to be completed very soon. We have Arctic Brook here, Cape Heart Brook, Burke Stream, which is around the airport. You know, there was a lot of talks about that related to de-icer in the two thousands. We have Shaw Brook out here, which also has a pretty good land area in Herman and some of Hammond, and Sucker Brook, which, you know, we sort of shared with Hammond as well. But it's a lot of land area when you look at it, that really affects what people can do based on the stormwater regulations. Those lower thresholds for permitting exist in those watersheds. But we're required to do improvements as part of the permit, three BMPs per watershed. So we're doing some education, we're doing watershed planning, and then we're also implementing, you know, constructed features like you would have to do in a permitted site to try and improve the water quality in those areas. One challenge we have for that is you can't use the three nineteen grant fundings, which we have used in the past, but those can't be used for permit compliance. So that sort of limits our funding sources a little bit. Just to kind of keep you up to date, you know, stormwater projects we've done in the last year, a few pipe projects, both to, you know, improve stormwater collection on the surface and also probably help the groundwater some. We did Montgomery Street and Silver Road. Those were, Silver Road was actually a separation as well. Balsam Road ditch, that was an area where the ditch would get full of ice, and then it would overflow and get onto the road, and you'd have to clean ice off the road. That was causing problems. Sucker Brook, one of those improvements I was just talking about, we're having an outside firm do a design to do some geomorphic improvements in that stream, sort of behind the ground round and near the I ninety-five exit ramp to Hammond Street and three ninety-five. And Injaduaw Plan, we're nearly done with that. And then we're also doing repairs, not just public works, but engineering as well. So we've been around town, you know, fixing where we have breaks and doing improvements with those when we can.
Was that one of your projects over there by Tri-City Pizza that runs right next to it? Took a long time.
That was thankfully not us. I'm happy to say that was not us. That was a DOT project. We did do a repair right there. We did two repairs right there.
That whole street right there was torn up for a long time.
Yeah, that was a long time.
I think that was an outside contractor, no?
Yes, yeah, that's part of the Broadway Bridge project that that was happening. We ended up doing a repair right there on Broadway, not under a lamp, but anyways, yeah, glad to see the road open again. I took many calls for that one.
Well, I live over by the little city, so that was a local complaint for a long time.
Yeah, I'm surprised there wasn't more. So anyways, you know, that's kind of it for the permit. We have a lot of work to do to stay in compliance with the permit. Luckily, we have a funding source in our stormwater utility. We have some grant funding that we can look at. Chapter five hundred, which is stormwater law, which sort of affects the projects you see, you know, an acre of impervious, half an acre in an impaired watershed. They're doing an update to that as well.
That's.
Also going to improve or include low-impact development techniques. So that's sort of maybe halfway through the process with that as well. Main construction barrel permit has just been updated. That's another acre disturbance threshold kind of thing. A big change there is it used to be sort of when, you know, at this stage, when you would see a project, that would, you would expect that permit to happen. Now, it's going to be more administered and permitted to the person doing the earth-moving on that site. That's kind of the change, and it makes sense from an enforcement standpoint. And that's all Maine D E P, that's not us, but it's sort of interrelated here. And then, you know, we're still dealing with this permit that's new to us in twenty twenty-two, and I think we're pretty much used to those things, but there's still a couple more items that are getting tacked on to the end of the permit, too, that we'll have to have to do, including low-impact development. That's kind of my spiel. Thank you for all listening in. I'd be happy to take any more questions if there are.
Nicely done.
Good job. Any other questions, board members? Janet Jonas? Seeing none, I think you're all set, Rich.
All right. Housekeeping to bid. Rich is actually the stormwater manager, not a stormwater technician.
Yeah.
So just.
I actually was going to call him stormwater engineer, but I think you corrected me last year, but on the website, it says technician.
Oh, that was my type when I started.
Yeah, it's not, I don't think it's changing. Thank you.
Can you give me more words?
I wondered, it didn't seem like technician was right. That's what it said on the website. So yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
You've been around too long.
Yeah, he's too good for just technician.
Thank you.
Take care, Rich. All right, so with all that training out of the way, the next item on the other business is summary of feedback from the neighborhood meetings. Plant Officer Clark?
Yep. So just wanted to kind of go through some of the main highlights and takeaways from the feedback we received from the neighborhood meetings. And we also did some other pop-up events, too, like the Sidewalk Art Festival. We went to Green Drinks on Tuesday, which I didn't get a chance to add in some of that feedback, but I will mention that at the end. But some of the general takeaways as far as land use goes was generally a desire for more amenities within walking distance, you know, grocery, cafe, parks, things like that. People were really interested in mixed use. We've heard that throughout this process and also in the comprehensive plan. And some people do feel like there's too much focus on downtown. I think maybe they're thinking more from like a programming standpoint, but they could also be thinking about, you know, what we're doing as far as improvements and development and things like that. One, you know, an idea that's come up a couple times from people is this idea of having like secondary downtowns, outside of downtowns, more like village centers and places where we have like the Broadway Shopping Center and the mall and, you know, kind of having like nodes in the city rather than just having everything be in downtown. I think that's what people are trying to get at, which I think the land use plan in the comprehensive plan kind of gets at, especially in the Broadway area and Union Street. It designates that as neighborhood residential, which is kind of tones down some of the commercial development there and would be more like mixed-use, smaller-scale commercial. And the mall area, we've already zoned that for mixed use, so we'll kind of see what happens. You know, we were getting interest in residential there, so I think it's kind of organically happening there. But just an interesting takeaway, the other thing is, people want to see our older existing buildings maintained as much as possible. You know, our older neighborhoods, they want to see these things that make Bangor unique preserved. There's a lot of interest all over the place from different people in preserving and then creating more green space, preserving what we have and then creating more, like in parking lots and new developments, maybe even creating more parks. You know, I don't know exactly if that's feasible, but, you know, when we do have new developments, kind of looking at how can we, how can we really maximize our green space? And that could also look like potentially reducing impervious maximums, because we do have some pretty high maximums in some of our zones, and some zones don't have maximums. So just something to look at. One interesting thing, you know, we heard from people that were kind of on two different sides. You know, some people want to see just single-family everywhere and don't want to see multifamily. And some people want to see dense multifamily development. We really have both sides in Bangor. But something interesting that I heard from more of the single-family advocates was looking at our pre-approved building plan designs, saying, if multifamily looked like these, I would be more okay with it, which is really interesting to hear. So it kind of gives back up to the idea of doing design standards for multifamily in our, in U R D one, U R D two, more of our urban residential areas. And yeah, like I said, you know, people were kind of in different places with how they felt development should be, but, and also just location-wise, people in the Broadway area have a different set of concerns than people, for example, in the Fairmount area. People in the Broadway area, they're a lot more concerned with traffic, you know, clearly they live where there's a lot of traffic, and that's a big concern. And then also just environmental preservation, they've seen a lot of development in that area, and there's special habitat that's there, especially near Prentice Woods, and so they're really sensitive about that. And interestingly, there was some support for eliminating parking minimums and raising building height, so. And then we did also have an online, we had two online surveys. One was more for the general public, and one was for people more in the development field. And these were kind of just meant to be supplemental, like for people who couldn't come to our in-person meetings. So we didn't get a ton of responses, but it was interesting seeing like some really strong agreement throughout those surveys. And one of the most interesting things to me was that both in the development and the general public survey, most people were in agreement that we should allow homes to be built on smaller lots in our urban zones, so smaller than five thousand square feet, which has been kind of floated as a solution to having, we have a lot of non-conforming lots that are smaller than five thousand square feet. And it's kind of been floated as a solution to, we have this issue with people can't add, you know, another unit, even though technically they're in U R D one, you know, theoretically they could add it to four units, but they have to meet a certain lot size. Or U R D two, even sometimes that doesn't work out for people. So reducing that lot size has kind of been floated as a potential solution. So it's interesting that we heard that from people. There was also really strong agreement that streets should be designed to accommodate all users, so pedestrians, bicyclists, public transit, and drivers. And also, people were mostly on board with requiring bike parking for new development, which I thought was interesting. There were some mixed opinions on whether we should allow more things by right versus conditional, and also whether we're allowing for enough variety of commercial business or commercial uses and housing types, and whether we're really supporting small business. It would have been good if we could have dived in or dove into those things a little more, because I'd like to know why people feel that way. But yeah, just the overall sentiment from developers, especially that the code works better for our rural areas than urban areas. And I think that's kind of an indication of, you know, where we were at planning-wise when our code was last updated in the nineties. The focus really was more on like large lot development, sprawl, intense commercial development, and not really thinking about these kinds of things. And things are kind of shifting now, and people are more interested in the denser, more mixed-use. which I thought was interesting. There were some mixed opinions on whether we should allow more things by right versus conditional, and also whether we're allowing for enough variety of commercial business or commercial uses and housing types, and whether we're really supporting small business. It would have been good if we could have dived or dove into those things a little more, because I'd like to know why people feel that way. But yeah, just the overall sentiment from developers, especially that the code works better for our rural areas than urban areas. And I think that's kind of an indication of where we were at planning-wise when our code was last updated in the 90s. The focus really was more on large lot development, sprawl, intense commercial development, and not really thinking about these kinds of things. And things are kind of shifting now, and people are more interested in the denser, more mixed-use development and kind of preventing that sprawl. So I think we're just seeing that disconnect. Also, general agreement, and we've heard this when we work with developers, that our rules for buffering and screening aren't clear. They're kind of spread all throughout the code, and it makes it really difficult for people. And they're not very flexible either, so that's been a common concern. And one interesting thing I've taken away, just from some of the planning board meetings we've had as far as buffering goes, is that when we do look to change those, it seems to be really important that we keep that strong buffer standard between commercial and residential development. That seems to be really important to people. And so that was most of the land use feedback from Green Drinks. Well, we had these two different activities. One of them was like a design-your-own-development kind of activity, and we had some different housing types. We actually used the cutouts of our pre-approved building plan, so we had different multi-units, and we had ADUs and garage apartments. And most of the time when I see people do this, and this also happened at the neighborhood meetings, people will choose a bunch of different types of housing for the same lot and kind of cluster them together. And so I thought it was interesting that that was the trend. And just two ideas, they were, somebody just put these on the map. We had a map of different parts of the city, and you could put different building types on there, like small-scale, commercial, residential, and then apartment buildings. Somebody put some high-density housing near the hospital. And then also on Hogan Road, around Dorothea Dix, they put smaller-scale mixed-use development. So I just thought it was interesting. That was everything. And we heard a lot of one-off ideas, but those were the general trends.
Thank you, Anya.
Yep.
So, board members have any questions on this? I'm just curious. I assume part of the purpose of doing that, because there's some useful information in there, is to join that up with the consultant that we have?
Yep. So I've sent all that to the consultant, so they'll use that as we're going into the actual writing of the code.
Changing the code, yeah. Okay, awesome. I'd know, because you brought it up, the villages idea. I call it a villages idea, this idea that people would want these neighborhoods with small commercial joined in, is really, I brought up before, the 2018 building study that the city did, housing study, I think is what it was technically called. And that's in there. That's one of the ideas that's in there. And that's part of why I bring it up often, because I think it's a popular idea and might solve a lot of what we're trying to do as a city. Anything else?
Just my own curiosity. You said there was some themes coming out of Fairmount as opposed to Broadway. What was the theme at Fairmount?
Well, a lot of the people we heard from there were more of the single-family advocates. So it's hard to say. The trend was they want to maintain single-family. But we didn't, honestly, we didn't get a lot of people from there. There was just a subset, like a group of people, that came to represent their interests. And we had a definite set of people from the Broadway area that were, they were mainly, had concerns about the Grand View development. But we heard at several meetings from a few people from Fairmount and the tree streets, and they tended to be single-family advocates, but we did also hear from some people that didn't feel that way. So yeah. Kind of going back to that village concept, one person I spoke to, she kind of built on that idea and felt like we should have these nodes of denser development and then have kind of like a transition and have lower intensity development as you get further into the core of the neighborhoods. Because she was primarily worried about, not necessarily gentrification, I would call it, but your property values going way up because you can build all these extra units, which was an interesting concept. And it clearly is important for people to maintain or preserve what's special about our neighborhoods. We don't want to destroy that. So I think we can reach that with missing-middle housing, like two to three units. But I'm not sure that going way above that really makes sense for a lot of the urban neighborhoods, but that's just the general gist I got from people. So yeah.
Oh, Member Jonas, you have your hand up. I'm sorry, I didn't realize.
No problem, just listening. Just a quick comment regarding the very first thing that Anya said regarding the focus on, or the apparent focus on downtown. Our downtown has a dedicated organization that plans events and promotes downtown and draws people in. So I think that were we to try to do that on a, oh, back in Virginia, we called it a ward or a neighborhood, we'd really need to come up with some kind of way to have some kind of organized effort in each one of the proposed areas in order to do that.
Good point. Yeah, well said. Again, going back to the villages idea, that's what that suggestion was, is for them to come up with their own idea for their own area, to develop that. I also think, just commenting on the downtown thing a little bit, downtown gets money. I think there's more money that's spent downtown, which matters. Yeah, yeah. Not so much in the neighborhoods necessarily, or at least is obvious.
Yeah, they have that dedicated surcharge for downtown that funds a lot of that, yes.
Yep. Member June?
Yeah, it does sound like, at least if you believe what's in Bangor Daily News, that there's some breakthrough about the mall, and that there might be some movement there and some opportunity for the people we're talking about with the secondary neighborhood kind of thing, that maybe something might break through there.
We'll see. Yeah, hopefully.
It's got to be sooner or later.
They got some things to work through, but-
Yeah, I know they got some issues.
Like lawsuits. All right, and that kind of ties into the next item, which is on the agenda, is just the land development code, land use planning, right? You didn't necessarily need to add anything to that.
No.
Okay. Any other comments, questions on this? Is there anything else you wanted to bring up?
I can't after the meeting.
Okay. All right, I wasn't sure how you wanted to handle it. We need to sign some stuff this evening?
Yeah, we have the plans from tonight's item, and then we also have findings from the last two meetings. And Beaumont, I think there is an issue with that, so we need you guys to sign that as well.
Okay.
You said that last two meetings?
The last meeting, two from the last meeting.
Two from the last, okay.
Yeah.
Two decisions from the last meeting, so Ted, don't sign those.
Okay.
But what we did tonight, everyone that's here can sign, except for Janet. And unless anyone else has anything else to bring up, we get a fairly short evening this week, which is great. And it is 7:58, we're adjourned.